Did you watch last week or the week before Dick Goddard's last weather forecast that they kept talking about? And he said, his last forecast, it's going to be cold for the next three months and snow for the next three months. Okay, then. It was his forecast.
And I will be thinking from about you from the beach in Warren.
Yeah. Thanks.
Now, when you come back, you better bring some warm food with you.
I'll be bringing something back. Some Kona coffee. Okay.
Okay. I am reporting on financials that I approved on December 8th. We've obtained Resolution 16-162 and December 12th, Resolution 16-163. So on December 8th, there was a requirement to do encumbrances, including a then and now for the sheriff and a blanket increase for Judd County Board of D.D. Construction Funds for Contracted Services. And then on December 12th, we had supplemental appropriation transfers. There was a request from June court and prosecutor to fund year-end hospitalization and a supplemental appropriation transfer for the treasurer delinquent tax fund for year-end hospitalization.
Morning, Ann.
Good morning. Okay, in today's financial, we have two appropriation transfers from the general fund contingency account to return appropriations to the sheriff's office. Fees reimbursed in the causes of the general fund and for expenses reimbursed in the causes of the general fund. Their cash transfer of the general fund for the debt payment for the water tower and county treatment plant. One travel encumbrance for the building department. In the vouchers, we have a payment of $35,445.60 for the Logicalis for the EDP board for the switch project. Payments of $8,750 and $2,634.04 to the City of Chardon for portions of 2016 funding, the police prosecutor's office and municipal court free trial release officer. A payment of $42,812 to Keystone U.S. Management for Reporting System at the courthouse. Payment of $10,000 to Smart Bill for the treasurer's office and a payment of $15,275 to YORAS Court for Water Resources for the final payment on the Thompson wastewater project.
I have one other question for you, and I missed this one this morning when I was talking to you. So under community development, is a $20,000 item listed Peterson Airport wise? Is that for the eight hundred and stuff that they were doing from that?
I believe that since that's under community development, that was the block grant and that was the doors.
No, that was the airport.
Oh, the airport restroom.
The airport. The airport.
What was that for if you were?
You made a rush for ADA.
Oh, I see.
Doors restroom, sorry.
I was talking to George Davis yesterday from the airport, thought he was very happy with that.
Commissioner's office is requesting board approval for Resolution 16-164. I remind you of the financials for the beginning of December 15th through December 16th.
I'll make that motion. You got a second? I'll take it.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Tracy.
We have today's, we utilize software at the agency from Mediarware and it is for all of our reporting, all of our statistics, and it also is how we get audited for federally funded programs. We have a master license and service agreement with Mediarware. It goes per 12-month periods. So we actually have been holding off paying our January bill because the contract agreement was not sufficient to our attorney. So we've been going back and back on the agreement for about six-plus months. So we need to do a 12-month agreement for January 16 to December 16 as well as next year. So we have two 12-month contracts to go over because Laura just kind of finally gave the approval on it yesterday after about six months of working on the contract.
Okay, so we do have an agreement with them, but it's just not signed yet?
It is not signed yet, and we have not paid our bills yet because the bills are due with the agreement and we were not agreeing on the agreement.
But they did perform the service, right?
Basically, it's a master license agreement. It's for us to keep our license and it's also for any additional support. Our do-it department does a lot of our support and we do some support in-house, but there are some above and beyond software issues we may have where we may have to call Mediarware. So it's our master license agreement.
So software is since on a server that we own?
We do own the server. Yeah, what's good, yeah. We are currently running a 2009 software program through Mediarware. After that, it became cloud-based and we did not make the jump to cloud-based. Currently, we have the servers in our.
So 2009 is the last version they supported that runs on a local server?
That's my understanding. Everything is cloud-based as well as basically most human services programs are all on the cloud at this point. We are still running on a server. But this is a master license agreement. We aren't doing any kind of upgrades even though I would like to see that. It makes, it's very antiquated. It does get all the correct statistics. It gets all of our reports. All of our information is accurate and it does allow for our, to be audited federally for our programs. But there is a lot of functions that we cannot do in-house because it is on the server.
And the dollar amount per year is the same?
Just under $4,000 a year.
It's the same amount for both?
But we've not been operating under an agreement up until this point in the past before you got here. I mean, this software's been around a long time before you got here, so. So we had kind of a word-of-mouth kind of an agreement? We haven't really had a contract, so to speak?
Here's what I can tell you. Anytime that I get a contract, I go through the proper process of taking it to the prosecutor having you sign it. I can't really comment on anything that happened before my time. However, this is the first time that I received a contract. I cannot comment on any documents before my time.
Okay. So, and we don't need to belabor this, but you and I talked before coming in here just for the general public to understand. And I have a bunch of questions on this particular arrangement, so we'll probably approve this today, but I still have some questions. And for whatever it's worth, cloud-based stuff always makes me nervous, particularly if it's a government-based system and it depends on who owns the cloud. For the most part, for people who don't understand what the cloud is, it's basically that stuff.
It's the server on the internet.
The server, that's right. Server that's.
Sounds mysterious when you say it's in the cloud.
And so if it's government-based stuff and all the government agencies are using it, the government not owning servers and that, they should provide the cloud services if we're going to do that. We'll have one set of services that's leveraged and so on and so forth. And so I'm not seeing that in this, and so I've got some questions on that.
Yeah, there's no cloud. We are not doing anything related to the cloud at all. We are not on the cloud. That has prevented us from upgrading.
Okay. Well, let's talk more about it anyway. We don't need to put this aside always because of the questions that I have today. All right.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and authorize the president and board to execute Mediarware Information Services Incorporated master license and services agreement between the Judd County Board Commissioners and Mediarware Human and Social Services Incorporated for the use of software for the SANS registration program. As further acknowledged, the term of the agreement is for a 12-month period, January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016, and for a 12-month period, January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. As set forth in the billing invoice order form, which is incorporated into the agreement by reference under Section 11, term and termination of license.
I have one other question for you before we go through the voting process. We had legal review this. Did we have Steve Decatur review the contract?
We did not have Steve review the contract. It's basically the master license agreement that talks about terms of the contract. If we do not feel we get the services that we have signed up for, just a lot of legal where we would have litigation, et cetera. So Laura reviewed it and went back and forth within four or six months with the company.
And the data that's stored in here, is this part of our record retention process? Does it fall underneath our record retention window? Do you know the answer to that?
I don't know what data is on there.
We have a lot of sensitive client files. There are some reports that would fall under your records retention. We do have some paper copies for client information that should be purged every four years.
I have not memorized your retention schedule.
I believe, I believe.
Let me make a note.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of information on here that is not part of the record retention such as adult protective service referrals and notes that are very sensitive.
Generally speaking, and I'll just make this comment and then we can get into the voting process. IT kinds of contracts should be consistent relative to how we approach them. In other words, when you've got a contract with a software company, let's say that the software company gets bought out by somebody else.
Right.
Or he goes bankrupt.
Right.
Or whatever, you know, if we're in the cloud, this company goes bankrupt, what happens to the data? Who owns that data? How do you get access to that data?
How do we get the source code?
How do you get the source? That's right. If it's obligated, if we're obligated to run by this and we're running by it and now we lose access to it because of, you know, this is a private company. This is not a government agency and so therefore it'd go out of business. And so there's some serious questions that we need to start asking relative to these contracts. So Steve, if we're not having an IT expert review these contracts for consistency across our county, I think that's a problem for us. And so let's file that away for future conversations.
In his defense, I have talked to Steve about this and he's, has indicated that what we do have in-house has got triple redundancy. It's backed up in two separate, completely unrelated places. So we feel like what we, what we have here is pretty safe. This whole cloud thing scares the heck out of me. As you said, I totally agree with you.
Well, even with the software used for our county, if that company goes out of business, what is our agreement with them regarding that software?
Usually there will be something in the contract that talks to that, but yeah, you're right. We should be making sure that it's there.
I didn't used to negotiate these contracts all the time with companies. And I can tell you, for a large multi-billion dollar corporation, if a company that we were using the software, Oracle or SAS or whoever, if they go out of business, we had an agreement where I already encouraged the company to negotiate an agreement, you own that source code. That source code is turned over to the company so you can continue to operate as a company because if they go out of business and it's not supported anymore and you've got all kinds of legal problems because Oracle's fighting with, you know, SAP or whatever the case is, you can't put up with that because that'll put you out of business. Same thing for the county. So, you know, that's.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident on like the, say, the New World Software, when that was all negotiated, that was all baked in there. But I haven't read this contract.
And we don't normally, I mean, it's not been a part of the conversation that I recall in this office. I think we need to maybe step back and look at the licenses that we're using across the very thing. And, you know, we got all of these, a zillion different types of systems we have to maintain and they cost us a zillion dollars. So anyway, I'm sorry.
If I may just interject, just one thing. We are not on the cloud. This is not, I just, because we keep talking about the cloud, I just want to be very clear with everyone here. We are not on the cloud and we are on a server.
Right. With old software.
With old software that our tech department maintains. So we are not on the cloud, so no one needs to worry about their information being out in internet outer space.
And if Windows decides to upgrade to version 11 and this software is old software and 11 now breaks our software, what do you get? If this company is not going to update their software? There's issues around this that we don't even talk about or think about.
Well, technology has issues in itself with all frequent updates and, you know, you get to a point where old, old versions aren't supported. So, I mean, it does, it does get tricky and then as we move more toward a paperless society, you know, there are a lot of functions that we can't perform. We can't scan documents into the system until we upgrade, you know? So, so we still have this electronic file and paper file. So everything has a plus and a minus, you know? As long as we can do things safely and come up with a good plan moving ahead, you know, it's good to investigate things, but it has to be done safely and protect people's information.
Does this run on Windows 10? Are you running on Windows 10? You're running Windows 7? What's the server?
Your workstation. Probably you're mostly Windows 7.
I think we're Windows 7 for the most part.
Really?
Uh huh.
Wow. Okay. Sorry.
We're still Windows 7 in this office. So I mean, we're.
Right?
Yeah. Sorry.
I didn't want to go back. I didn't want to do that. Thank you. I apologize.
No, no problem.
I will make, I will make a motion for item number three.
Thank you, Blake.
Give me a second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay.
Thanks.
Have a nice day.
See you.
You got to have the fun, buddy.
So there is anybody here from the building department? This is just a procedural thing where they originally put out this lumber construction, applied for a permit and the understanding was what they were doing would be involving a total rebuild of what the structure was and it appears that upon some review whether the scope of the project changed or something changed, building department is saying that they should have only been charged $311.99 for a partial rebuild. So this action is asked in order to authorize the building department to provide a refund in the amount of $411.17.
Apparently it says the house experienced a fire in November. The owner brought plans aimed at a complete rebuild. However, after inspection of the property, only about a third of the structure needed to be repaired. That's the difference. Building department is requesting board approve and refund the partial building permit priced based Judd County labor construction as they were charged for a total rebuild $723.16 when it should have been a partial $311.99, a difference in the amount of $411.17.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay.
Aye. Kelly, how are you today?
I'm getting lost. Where are you? Okay, I am here, I guess last week while I was away, Joanie was going to bring this through, but she forgot what it was. It was the amendment for the BF-15 grant. This was not an amendment for funds, as you recall. This was just an amendment of the outcome because our bids came in way over what the estimate was. We had to lower the outcome. There was no money change or budget change in the amendment. We just had to amend to lower doorways on the county grounds and we ended, we ended up actually being able to do the same amount that we initially wanted to, it turned out. So.
Is this the one where we, all the bids came in over and then we submitted a new deal and then all the bids came in under?
Not under, but right where we needed them to be. So, yeah, it was.
Lower than, than?
Than the first round. Yes, completely different.
Because we only got one the first time.
Yeah.
And then the next time we got three.
Yeah. So in the same thing with the airport, the bids came in too high and so the second round of rebids, we did have to, we are going to phase that project. This year we're just doing the ADA entryway and maybe next year we'll be able to do the ADA restroom. But you have to do the entryway first. You can't do an ADA restroom when there's no ADA entrance in the building. You're putting the horse before the cart there. So we're going to phase that project out.
How long have we been talking about those?
I know. Well, December 31st, the project ends. So, and the airport is pretty much done now and they're really, really happy with it. They did a great job. Happy with the doors so far. Bless you. So, yeah, they're, they're getting done at the last minute, but they're getting done.
But you can put an ADA door in without an ADA bathroom?
You have to put the door in first. You don't want to put the bathroom before the door. How are they going to get into the bathroom if the entryway isn't ADA?
That could be nasty.
Yeah.
Could turn up bad.
So that's why the entryways are always done before the interior of the building.
The Office of Community and Community Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the president and board to execute the Office of Community Development 2015 Community Development Program amended scope of work and budget grant via 15-181 for the period September 1st, 2015 through February 28th, 2017 in the amount of $101,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Excuse me, before we proceed, I have a question.
Yes.
In regards to the ADA bathrooms, can anybody in the room explain to me why even in this one, there's a bar, an assist bar, behind the commode?
Um, that's all I can.
Every ADA bathroom I've ever been in.
Is on the side.
Has a bar behind, behind the commode as well as one along the side of it. What is the bar behind, what's the purpose of installing a bar behind the commode?
I'm not sure. My projects that I do, I never have a bar put behind the commode. So I'm not sure.
Check it out.
Yeah, I will. Do you have an answer to that?
There's, there's, when you sit down, it's a hand behind you. So you have, you have two points to pick yourself up, two points to go back. So instead of one on the side, you have a hand on the side, on the back that you can pick. I know it's far, it's a far range.
Yeah, it's real far.
But when you're sitting down, it's a place to put your hand down. So it's like grabbing the back of your chair when you sit down.
That's why we don't draw.
Thank you.
There's a, there's a guy that designed all this, name is Rube Goldberg.
Rube Goldberg.
I don't know. But.
His first name was Rube.
Rube, yeah. Or Boob.
Rube Goldberg.
I don't know. Thanks for the question.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks for answering. Hello, Nick.
Morning.
Why did it make sense? Since you got all the answers, why the chicken part?
I do not know that answer.
Oh.
Do not know that answer.
And was the road sealed? Was it, yeah, was it chipped and sealed or new, freshly paved?
That's a good question. I don't have that answer either.
The chicken was checking out the road is what he was doing.
Why would Mr. Gray like that there?
Yeah. He had to go there. Just had to go there.
Anyway, so.
I'm going to come on on the day that we're going to get goofy. You know that.
Yes. Item six, Mulberry Road resurfacing project. This is the final change order. The job came in completed $26,800 change underneath the bid amount. The revisions were due to a reduction once we build the surface. We didn't have to do as much repairs that we were anticipating and we build a lot less than, you know, once the firms were cut off, it was a lot less material once it was measured.
So. To refresh my memory, was this from 306 to, was this east or west of 3?
This was the east section. This was he and I, this was from 306 all the way.
All the way to.
All the way to.
Twing.
Twing. Fowler's Mill, whichever you want to call it. But, yeah. Okay. So Chester and Munson, Tom, we got the other one on the books. Make sure you're after.
The county affairs office is requesting board approve next year change order number one, final decreasing in contract with Ryanak paving incorporated the asphalt resurfacing of Mulberry Road CH 39, Section C through I, in Chester and Munson Town, 20 miles, $26,233.92.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
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 Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay? to the Nuwaka Board of Directors meeting on Friday, December sixteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Clippel.
Aye.
You have to open it up.
Uh, I already went back there, she should be coming on shortly, I can, I can get-
I'm not a deck circle.
There she is, okay.
You warming up back there?
Warming up back there, yeah, she threw a couple warm up pics, pictures.
If you guys wanna-
You guys might wanna warm up because, uh-
I was just gonna take a nap, but.
Well, this is the perfect time.
You get to sign all of those. Ow, don't really fall asleep.
Really, okay.
Hey, Ann.
Yes.
There it is.
It's in the back.
I know, I'm not used to that, sorry. I'm like, used to being the second page.
Okay.
Alright, so we will go through this, shouldn't take too long, this is the twenty seventeen permanent appropriations. Now, this is the actual budget of the county. There's a lot of terminology thrown around, we do a tax budget earlier in the year, and that's for planning purposes. And from that, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Budget Commission will come up with resources that then are the basis for establishing the actual official budget. So this is the permanent appropriation, and it represents a spending plan for next year that does not include what will be certified in January, once the actual balances in each fund are known after the final books are closed out for the year. Okay, so the, the Budget Commission, which is comprised of the, uh, the auditor, the treasurer, and the prosecutor, certify the revenues expected to be received for the year. And then you add to that what's called the unencumbered fund balance identified at the beginning of the year. That would be the cash that's in the bank, the last purchase orders that have been issued, commitments to spend money. So you have to deduct from the actual cash you have, the official commitments you made to spend money, those are called encumbrances. So you take the revenues we expect to get for next year, along with that unencumbered balance, and together, that's called resources. So then the county commissioners, one of the duties of the county commissioners is to set the appropriations for county departments. And the total amount of the appropriations cannot exceed those resource sources that the Budget Commission established. Now, we, we have a, an overall budget that includes over a hundred different funds, and the overall budget that's being asked for Commissioners' approval today is in excess of a hundred and seventeen million dollars. We focus on the general fund, as its name implies, that's the general government money that the Commissioners have discretion to spend for a variety of things, whereas the rest of that a hundred and seventeen million dollars is comprised of special revenue funds, uh, the road funds, uh, mental health funds, uh, job and family services, children's service levy funds, department aging funds, developmental disabilities funds. So those are all special purpose, they could only be spent for very narrowly defined things. So we talk about the general fund, and we use the general fund as kind of the barometer of the county to be able to afford certain things such as adjustments in compensation levels. So in the tax budget, uh, we establish a carryover balance, very conservative carryover balance of four and a half million dollars. The Budget Commission has established, estimated revenues for twenty seventeen of twenty-seven million five hundred and twelve dollar, or five hundred, twenty-seven million five hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, total resources of over thirty-two million dollars. Uh, this revenue estimate has been established based on a, somewhat of a adjustment from the revenue estimate that was, uh, established in July or August when the initial certification was made. There is, uh, I think, what was it?
About nineteen thousand dollars more for the local government support fund than what was in the tax budget.
In the tax budget, so it's a very-
Probably the same.
Yeah, very minor adjustment. Okay, I'll let Ann kind of go into the detail of the revenue sources.
Okay, um, from the chart, if you can see that from, uh, back there, hopefully, including some of its color. The big white piece down there is the real estate taxes, that is obviously the largest, uh, actually, no, yeah, it is real estate taxes, I'm sorry. It's actually the largest, uh, piece of the, uh, the pie in there, actually, no, the sales taxes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
This is really hard to read, I don't know.
I know, we lose the, we lose the color.
You'll lose the coloration here. The largest piece is the county sales tax, which next year is budgeted at approximately thirteen million dollars. For twenty sixteen, we have actually just certified the thirteen million dollars, so that is very much in line with our current numbers. The next biggest piece is the real estate taxes, about seven and a half million dollars of our revenue comes from those. The rest of the numbers there you see are much smaller, uh, department fees and fines is about two point three million dollars, and the property transfer tax is a million, and so again, the largest pieces comes from the real estate tax and the sales tax and departmental fees and fines, the rest are all very small, that includes the local government fund, which is only about two percent of our revenue, and the casino tax, which is about three percent of the revenue.
I'm sorry, Ann, did you, um, I was tuning out the slide before this, did this show the general fund relative to, or the real estate sales tax relative to the overall set of funds that are coming into the county, meaning for the parks? Because there's real estate, um, taxes, sales tax stuff that goes to the park system, it goes to the school system, it goes to-
Correct, and, and, and that's, that's a good point to establish, that the county budget that the Commissioners by law control does not include the park district, does not include the health district, does not include the county library. Yet those are all, or the schools. So, you know, we do, we've done presentations that kind of establish that, uh, the overall amount of property taxes that goes to the county is relatively small, you know, school usually comprising by far the largest portion. And in a lot of cases, the next highest portion would be, um, a township. And when you finally get into the county, uh, revenue, uh, it's DD, I think, is the single largest county agency that receives-
If you see the orders of magnitude of tax dollars that people pay, and this is the reason I bring it up, it's significant. If you bring, uh, look at the order of magnitude of taxes paid by people, the county is a very small piece of the overall taxes being paid.
Correct.
Schools is a huge chunk, our park system is a huge chunk, so you see large blocks of dollars going to agencies we have no oversight on whatsoever. We get a little small slice to manage the county, and now it's a hundred and seventeen million dollars for all the, include all the funds outside.
But that doesn't even include, that doesn't include the parks and the health.
That, that is available individually on your-
Right, but it's important, it's important to know, we're talking about our, we're talking about our budget in the context of taxes.
Right.
And seeing that puts, helps people to adjust their minds relative to the, the tax burden that they have, and, and puts the order of magnitude into perspective as we're going into this conversation. Now, we have a small slice that we work with, and within that small slice, we get X amount in sales tax and real estate tax and so on and so forth. But I think it's important to note, and we're not showing that slide here, where that falls, where we fall in the pecking order of taxes paid, because people, I, I talk to people all the time across the county, and their perspective or their thought is that we control all the money in the county.
Right.
And so we don't control all the money in the county. In fact, it's their taxes, and I get dragged on because, you know, they pay a lot of taxes, and, you know, where's it all going?
Well, the bill comes from the county, so that's for a lot of people, oh, it's coming from the county treasurer, that must be the county's getting the money.
That's right, so I mean, we don't control the school systems, we don't control the parks, we don't control the board of DD. There's a lot of organizations we don't control, and a huge, um, dollar amount out of the taxes go to those organizations, plus the townships and cities. So that's it, I mean, I don't want to belabor it, but it is a point that needs to be, I thought you wanted to, uh-
I'm gonna do my-
Conduct a technical experiment.
Technical experiment.
Well-
Doesn't seem to make any difference, does it?
He thought the background was throwing the-
The wall is light blue.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, well, I wonder if that has an effect on the coloring, that it's not a white wall.
This is a, this is a result, we have actually a hand-me-down overhead projector from the Department of Emergency Services. So it takes the color and it changes, and we thought about maybe getting, because the color of flash, or the-
There might be a contrast in brightness setting on that thing, possibly.
You know, there's a brand-new high-tech projector in a little used conference room down in the health department that is wireless.
We can move down there.
And I think that, you know, we could flip one.
We don't own it, health department, they have their own board and they own all that, probably, we'll have to compensate.
I was told that came from our maintenance department, but.
Well, if it, okay, I stand corrected.
Sorry, we're going on tangents today, you'll have to be, you know, forgive us.
Well, I apologize for the unrealistic reproduction of the color, because it's kind of hard.
Much better on the dark ones.
When Ann's trying to explain the color and it's not up there, it's kind of confusing, so we may spring for a flat screen here and next year or so if the Commissioners will agree with that, but for now, we'll-
They're cheap right now, so.
Yeah, they're getting down there, alright, so moving right along.
Okay, so in the twenty seventeen permanent appropriations, as, uh, Dave indicated, all of our funds total about a hundred and seventeen point seven million dollars. The general fund is thirty-two million dollars of that. In the general fund, we actually had line item requests that exceeded thirty-three point eight million dollars from the departments that were not funded, so you see there is a little bit of a gap there between what was requested in the general fund versus what we actually appropriated this year. By category, this is the breakdown, this is a little bit better.
Yeah, cool.
Um, the biggest chunk of the, uh, general fund budget goes to public safety, and of course, everybody wants to know exactly what that compromise comprised of, it is the sheriff, the coroner, and the building department. Legislative and executive is the next largest piece, which is the auditor, commissioners, prosecutor's office, recorder, treasurer, maintenance, and board of election and planning. Under judicially, you obviously have the courts, and then in the small pieces there, you've got a piece for human services, miscellaneous, and health, but again, the largest pieces come from the public safety and the legislative and executive.
Okay, so let's walk through the actual supplemental appropriation process, as I indicated at the beginning, what the Commissioners are being asked to approve a, uh, permanent appropriation or the permanent budget today. And we do it in early December so that the auditor can then turn on the switches and allow people to start setting up their purchase orders for next year, getting business ready to go, so that as we move into twenty seventeen, we're not, uh, slow on paying bills and keeping county government functional. But we're gonna have, uh, a supplemental appropriation, as generally looked at being completed in late in January of, of this next year. So looking at our forecast right now, uh, we would estimate that the actual cash balance that would be in the checking account at the beginning of, uh, January would be about eight point two million dollars. Then we have to subtract the eight hundred thousand dollars in the carryover encumbrances, and I was saying, the part that is tied up in purchase orders where we're committing to spend money, uh, going into the new year. So that leaves us a net of seven point four million that will be certified as available by the Budget Commission. Again, this is an estimate, so we won't know until the first couple of days in January what the actual amount is. Now, we have to deduct from that the four and a half million dollars that we already assumed we're gonna have, that we can't spend it twice, so we're gonna take out the four and a half million that we have assumed in the permanent appropriation. That leaves us around two point nine million dollars available for supplemental appropriations going into next year. One of the first things we try to do is restore the normal contingency balance up to the, uh, three percent that's allowed by law, which you put around nine hundred thousand dollars if they might, okay? Contingency is allowed by law, and that, that is a pot of money that's there to be spent for things that we can't anticipate, we can't put into a budget. Uh, I think we started about nine hundred thousand this year, and the current balance is around three twenty-five or something like that, so, you know, in a typical year, we have a couple of hundred thousand left, and that's what, part of what forms that carryover balance that may be higher than the conservative estimate we put in the budget. So again, we want to restore that back up to the nine hundred thousand range. And then from that, you deduct, uh, departmental requests that have not yet been funded, many of these are discretionary, and Ann will go over them on the next slide, about two point two million, which theoretically would leave us around fifty-five thousand dollars remaining. Now, departmental requests not funded, one of the things we don't have in there is anything yet for a salary increase. And, uh, just to kind of keep our employees up, you know, going from where they're at is being generally behind a lot of other entities, we're gonna hope that the Commissioners will look at doing some sort of a increase. As an example, the impact on the general fund of a three percent increase would be about a half million dollars. So you look at this two point two that's available, look at the next slide, it'll show you what people are asking for, and then bear in mind, if you want to provide for any kind of increase, you have to factor that in.
But that's a permanent increase.
That is a permanent increase.
It's not a one-time annual increase, it's a half million increase.
Forever.
Forever.
I mean, well, it's forever.
We'll deduct that automatically out of our budget forever.
Going forward, going forward, yeah, yeah. Okay, Ann will go over the unfunded requests.
Okay, um, the two point two million dollars, um, the largest piece of that is from the board of elections, and that was a request for, um, new equipment for voter registration software and for new scanners for the poll stations. That's the single largest item up there that you see. Some of the other large items under the, uh, maintenance department, there was a request for an additional four hundred thousand dollars of contracted services, and in the sheriff's department, the difference there was is additional request for equipment for the nine-one-one system, um, so that makes up the biggest chunks of that two point two million dollars that we did not fund at this point.
Ann, on the board of elections, there was talk of refunding from the state or someone, does, uh, does that number reflect that, or no?
No, that would just be what we would pay, does not reflect any reimbursement we would get back from the state.
And does this reflect the Medicaid, um, situation, the reduction?
The, uh, that's back on the revenue estimate slide, I believe.
Yes, that, that, in the, in the sales tax, um, it's in there in terms of what we certified with the Budget Commission was thirteen million, which is what we actually have through November of this year, so that takes into account the, uh, fact that we probably will lose, I think it was, four hundred thousand dollars. Because this year, we probably will actually have a little more than the thirteen million we've certified so far. We actually expect to be closer to fourteen million at the end of the year. So we have thirteen million in twenty seventeen, which gives us about a million for any reductions in the sales tax.
So translate that for anybody who's confused, there was some Medicaid, uh, confusion over the Medicaid situation, the governor did this Medicaid extension thing, and it was being taxed, and then the federal government said, no, you can't do that, so they're gonna, they would require us to deduct that, um, amount of money for us, Judd County, by four hundred thousand dollars.
No, yeah, things will no longer be taxed, and there's some-
Is that going forward, or it's not retroactive?
No, it's going forward, but there's some other entities that are taking a much larger hit, our hit is around three percent or so. There's other entities, including transit agencies that have sales tax funding they're taking, I think, uh, we're at Cleveland RTA, looking at what, twenty million dollar reduction? Because their, their revenue collection is so high for sales.
And they're deep in the red anyway, because of, what I would say is mismanaged personally, but, um, but for, for another, just a general comment, which isn't often talked about, um, our budget is constantly under, what you would say is a tack, because there's changes that are happening constantly that could degrade our budget or to change our budget, so we have to be on guard against that constantly. So for example, we don't know what the future of transit's gonna be, transit dollars, with this new administration coming in federally, because it's a hundred percent federally funded, and so given rule changes, that might dramatically impact how that works, the Medicaid we just talked about. There, right now, we're going into a budget process down in, in Columbus, and there's a, um, bit of a shortfall at the state level, and there's a little bit of concern over that, and so oftentimes, what the state does is they adjust their budget on the backs of the local communities, on the townships and on the county and so forth. So we have to constantly looking at our budget in context of, okay, what could happen to us? You know, we may have a little extra cash in the bank, but we may not have that next year based on the political winds that are blowing, and so we're all kind of watching with bated breath to see what that means to us. So just, you know, that's just something to think about or file away as you're looking at the numbers you're looking at.
I believe the final slide is just a quick summary of our general fund debt. We have remaining some debt on a new eight hundred megahertz radio upgrade that was done a number of years ago. And in sixteen, we paid, we paid down five hundred thousand on that, we actually paid out a final payment of eight hundred thousand on a refinancing we've done to, to maintain cash with the county engineers building addition. So we paid down one point three million of the three point three million that had been issued, uh, in twenty fifteen. That leaves us a balance of two million dollars. And based on what we have in the, uh, debt retirement fund already, and based on what we expect to transfer in, our recommendation to Commissioners would be to go ahead and pay down the remainder of that two million dollars, making us debt-free and, and, and kind of setting the stage if the Commissioners are gonna move forward any kind of a facilities project, that we start from a debt-free basis to do that.
It's always a good idea, and it's looking like an interest rate increase is coming.
Right.
And so that may impact us, and it's something we have to factor into, so.
Uh, before we get to questions, I wanted to, uh, recognize, uh, the staff of the Commissioners' office, they all do a fantastic job. And in particular, our latest addition, Ann Raisik, our budget finance administrator. We've been blessed with some very good people doing the budget over the years, but Ann has just done a phenomenal job coming into her late spring, kind of picking up the budget process in the middle, and really taking it to the next level, and also solving some other longstanding problems, uh, in, in the office along the way, so I'm just very appreciative you're here. And thank you for the great work on this presentation and for all you do.
Happy to be here.
And I will, and I will add on, pile on to that, we, we have a great staff. And so, um, you know, we, we can look pretty, Blake and I, up here, and, uh, look good when we're doing our jobs, but it's all because you guys- Well, at least I should look pretty.
You been to the op Thomas first, Lee?
But all of this-
I think you need to go.
There's a lot of back, back prep that goes on in the back before we come out here, looking at contracts, looking at the paperwork, and there's stuff that comes on the agenda and off the agenda based on, you know, when I was sitting in the cheap seats out there, I didn't understand all the stuff that was going on in the back room. And so-
This is the paying section.
True statement, and, and I, we want to thank our, our, uh, taxpaying citizens that'll show up in this meeting.
Thank you for making it possible.
And take, and take part, but, um, you know, in, in line with what Dave was saying, we have a good staff, and they, they work really hard. They do a lot of, do a lot of things, take care, make sure that we're, we stay out of trouble to the most, the extent we can, and then we get ourselves into trouble because we speak out and do whatever, but, um, so with that said, thanks, Ann.
We? Yeah. You got something in your pocket?
Like today, just like today.
Having that said, Commissioners offices requesting the board approve an dispute resolution number sixteen dash one sixty-five, permanent annual appropriation for two thousand seventeen, in accordance with ORC five seven oh five point three and five seven five point four zero.
I'll make that motion, a second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye. Diane, you got a question, you say your name for the public record.
Sure, just a comment, it's not about permanent appropriations, uh, I'm Diane Jones from Auburn Township. And although we had a hiatus, uh, this year, uh, in, in, uh, commission meeting attendance, we thoroughly enjoyed the process and intend to keep learning about it, and the purpose for this comment is to publicly thank Blake Reer for his efforts in making these commission meetings more transparent to the public. For those of us who come often, uh, we are a little more aware of the process, but during the interim one week, we were not able to attend because of other commitments, the videos were extremely important to us, and their value lies in the fact that they can be played and replayed for understanding. So, uh, Mr. Reer, thank you so much for your efforts, uh, in, in making this process possible, and we've been deeply appreciative of your efforts and your achievements, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, I, I appreciate that, it's, uh, what most people in the public, including myself, have always complained about is the transparency and not understanding something, and the opportunity to go back, to see it, go back, review it, what did they mean by that, ask a question, go back, I think that's invaluable, and thank you for the, your-
You're welcome, sincerely, sincerely tender.
Yeah, the archives section of that too is really important, too.
So I'll just add on to, you know, nuance that kind of a little bit, that was Blake's idea, that was before I showed up. But, um, it, it wouldn't happen without the support of the board. And so, uh, over the years, the board has supported all of that.
For the number of us out here that are glad it happened.
I hate doing this, but we did this when I was on the school board, I was on for eight years, and it took me a year before we had them put on, and in, in that situation, it was filmed and shown on GTV. But since GTV doesn't cover the whole county, this was a more appropriate thing. The downside from this side of the table is you have to take the bitter with the sweet. If you say something stupid, well, it's there for God and everybody, I mean, it's just, but it, that's the price you pay.
It's the same thing on this side of the table.
Well, yeah, but it-
Try and capture those as well, yeah.
Your face might not be on there at the same time, but I'm just saying that-
Be faithful to that.
Yeah, you may get-
Hold on, I'll put your face back.
Yeah, you may get the audio, but, uh, it is, it is, uh-
Okay, you can wave to the audience a little.
It is a double-edged sword, but, uh, I, I always felt that it was worth it, and God knows, there's a few times I wish it wasn't there, but, for the most part, I think it's appropriate for transparency. And thank you, Mrs. Jones, for recognizing that.
And so, um, I'm gonna make one other comment, and this is for a public awareness standpoint, because there's so much that goes on that you don't get to see, because you don't go to all the meetings we go to, and you're not seeing all of the, the emails we get, and so on and so forth. There's not, been an ongoing discussion or dialogue about Nuwaka, you know how I feel about Nuwaka, and I'll tell you why I feel this way, and this, I'll give you a very specific example. We've been asked to ratify a new bylaw, a set of bylaws for Nuwaka, and over the years, Nuwaka has continued- And over the years, Nuwaka has continued to chip away at the, what I would refer to as a fair-based allocation of representation. So if you look at the original contract, it was three commissioners per county, plus three other individuals per county. So everybody got six, it was fair, everybody got an equal vote, yada, yada, yada. Over the years, as is often done by those who want to grab power for their own vested interest, Nuwaka's chipped away to add power. And now they've managed to get, we have three, we have three seats, and there's a total, out of a total of forty-four. Cleveland was not happy with the fact that they didn't have yet two more voices, and so they sued and made a request to add two more seats. I mean, Nuwaka, they've already got all the votes they need to do whatever they want to do. But Cleveland wants more of a vote at the table. Why would they want that? Because today, there's all kinds of financial shortfalls in the Cleveland area, and they can't think of how best to take care of those shortfalls, but they see a rich pot of money over in Jagger County they can draw from. And so, we have not received our road allocations, which I would consider a fair allocation, based on their calculation that they do. They change the calculation for how they determine where to put dollars and roads, and so on and so forth. And so, because of that, they've shifted the dollars to go to favor kind of the county into Cleveland. And so they want to yet increased their voice at the table, even though they own Nuwaka, for all intents and purposes. We go there, we speak out, we comment, we ask questions to little avail, because unless they are feeling magnificent or magnanimous that day, we get, we get no funding. So the, just as an example, in the resolution that they've recently asked us to ratify, and by the way, it won't go into approval without ratification of all five counties. There is a math calculation that they put into there. This is like, makes my head explode, when I think about the fact that they have to so complicate the bylaws. And we have the United States Constitution, which is this thick, that sets the basis for running our entire country, and it's very limited in how it's approached, it's very simple. And they want to so complicate the calculation on how to calculate the number of seats that everybody gets at the table, that they have to do this calculus, or summation calculation. This is an example of the absolute and utter nonsense that we have to put up with in that particular organization. From a master planning organization, I can see a lot of value, however, they so distort a fair process. That's the reason that you oftentimes will hear me speak out. It is not fair to Jagger County, and I will fight tooth and nail for, in the defense of Jagger County. If you look at the waste that goes through that organization, I mean, I can't tell you how many bicycles I saw on the bicycle trails coming in here today. Do you see any bicycles out there today? And yet, they've taken dollars out of the road systems, and people say, oh, that's an allocation to that particular purpose. Okay, kind of, but not really, because those road dollars could also be used to widen our roads in Middlefield and various places where you have buggies, and a true safety issue with the populations that we have in those communities. Those dollars can be used in actual true safety reasons, rather than recreational reasons. If you look at these stupid digital signs that tell you, watch out for drugs, I don't want to land in Cleveland, I was going to a show last night. If you look at the sound roofing walls, a million dollar a mile. So, I'm sorry if you're going on a rant today. I saw this, and actually Blake pointed something out that I didn't catch, and that is, they're also using that bylaw change as an opportunity to shift the bylaws to avoid ratification. Today, all five counties have to ratify it. If we ratified these set of bylaws, we will never have the opportunity to ratify changes to the bylaws again. They've now removed our opportunity to have any defense against some of the nonsense that I see in that organization down there. So they don't work in our interest, I can tell you that. They're working in Cleveland's interest, they're working in Kuyahoga County's interest. Jagger County is a, just a word they use periodically, we're considered great in Cleveland to them. And so, anybody who's interested in seeing the bylaws and seeing what I'm talking about, you're welcome to look at these. But I know that this is being recorded, and there'll be people that'll look at this, so for just general public awareness, you need to understand that we're defending, when we make decisions relative to Nuwaka, trying to defend Jagger County's rights to, for the taxpayers to get some back, some of their tax dollars that they put into the system, and for fairness within that particular board. And so, anyway, I just say that for, and I apologize to anybody who thinks that I'm going off, but they make, they make my blood boil. Nancy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to speak to the bike path, and I have talked about this before. I don't disagree about dollars being sent to alternative forms of transportation, but I'm not gonna sit here and let you misspeak about how it works, because the way that works is that federal dollars come into Nuwaka, and they set the parameters for the use of those dollars, not Nuwaka. So those dollars that are used for alternative forms of transportation cannot be used for anything else unless it changes in Congress.
Nancy, I thank you for the comment, and do you want to state your name for the record?
Nancy McArthur, I'm the mayor of Sharton.
And Nancy, I respectfully disagree with you. There is nobody in this room that knows Nuwaka and the federal transportation law, because I've read the law, better than me. And I can show you in the law where that allocation for those alternative forms of transportation dollars is made, how those alternative forms of transportation dollars can be spent, and I can tell you, and I'll put a hundred dollars on the table, and you can put your hundred dollars on the table, and we'll take each other out for dinner on the person that's right on this. Because those dollars that are allocated to bicycle trails are allocated for alternative forms of transportation.
That's correct.
Those alternative forms of transportation include buggy lanes and changes to roads.
I don't disagree with that, but you cannot use it for roads. And you also have to have a project ready to go, and so those, those areas that have buggy paths, they actually have to have the project ready to go for it to be approved. And so they did not have any projects, to my knowledge, ready to go and to be funded. So I don't disagree with what you're saying about alternative forms of transportation. Where I'm disagreeing, Skip, is that there is this impression that those dollars can be used for any road in Jagger County, and that's not true.
No, I didn't, I never said that. That they can be used for, first of all, at the federal level, we need to go to Dave Joyce-
I don't disagree.
And say, do away with this allocation, because we promised our taxpayers that those dollars were gonna go to roads, way back when, when we were setting up the whole federal tax on gas. The promise was take care of roads. And over the years, we've broken that promise, because we've allocated dollars to transit, we've allocated dollars to total livable communities, we've allocated dollars, out of road dollars, to these alternative forms of transportation. So those are road dollars. We've just, at the congressional level, now reallocated those to some other purpose. We've set those off-
I have said that time and again, and I've said in this room, and informed this body of that, everything.
That needs to, that needs to change. But relative to the alternative form of transportation dollars, we have studies done, multiple studies over the years, studies done before I arrived, that said buggy lanes, buggy, changes to the roads in the Middlefield area would contribute to the safety of both the Amish community and our other citizens that are going in and out of that. That money could have easily been used and allocated for safety purposes in the Middlefield area, and it was not. Until Ralph and I showed up, that conversation didn't even exist at the Nuwaka table. We started bringing that up and questioning it, now at least there's a conversation about that. That those dollars would be better spent, rather than on bicycle trails, to improve the safety of our Middlefield area.
Again, those entities in Middlefield need to put a project together and make it so that it's a project that's easily fundable, and there's a, there's a pay-in from the local entity. Don't think that the city of Sharton got all this money for free. We have to pay quite a bit of money for the bike path. It's not just Nuwaka dollars.
No, I didn't mention Sharton's name at all. I'm looking at bicycle trails, projects across northeastern Ohio, within the Nuwaka region. I didn't bring up Sharton, I didn't mention Sharton, I didn't allude to Sharton in my conversation with-
You made a mention about driving paths and seeing no one on the bike paths, so I'm not-
It's not just bike path, it's intermodal, it's sidewalks, and a better way to get to the RTA for the RNC, and on and on, it's CMAC money. The real issue that I have with it is if they have seven million dollars, say, in CMAC money, they can only spend it on those kind of projects. And then they go out and borrow seven million dollars to fix a bridge. I have a real, internally, I have a dilemma with, we've got money to fix the project that's the road and the public safety, and we don't spend it there. We borrow money and pay whatever interest rate, and then we take money that we have. If it were reversed, you'd never get any of those projects, because people would say, we're not gonna spend seven million dollars plus interest to put sidewalk art up, or beautification in the city of Cleveland. And understand, we're not getting a whole lot of sidewalk art dollars, and I don't know what Medina gets, or Lorraine, or Lake. The bulk of that goes downtown, where everyone else in Nuwaka, but Jagger County and the city of Cleveland, everybody else could vote no, and they could still pass it. There's something wrong, that when four counties could be for or against, and pick an issue, they could be for or against an issue, and be outvoted by one county. And, and they always talk about the population, and, and, and I brought it up down there one time, then I became disgusted and stopped going, that when this program started, the city of Cleveland had well over a million residents. We had, I thought it was around sixty thousand, or something like that, back in those days. So we doubled the size of our county, up to ninety-some thousand, an increase of, not doubled it, a fifty percent increase to come up there. And they lost hundreds of thousands of people to the suburbs, that's where our people come in here, and Medina and other counties. Yet their representation should increase. I mean, it's not like it's, we lost, they lost people, and they get to add, and we gained people, and we're here.
Well, we're talking about apples and oranges here, because I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Well, no, I, well, I think we're all basically on the same page, but the problem is, we don't write the law. The people in Washington do.
No, no.
And until they are prodded, or get the message, or whatever, it's, we're just spinning our wheels. It's-
Well, part of that, but the MPOs in the state of Ohio, we have the opportunity to modify the way MPOs work. The federal law dictates that they exist, the state of Ohio gets to configure them. And so, we can configure our MPOs to operate, we did. I mean, we had six representatives on balance, per county, at one time.
Like a senatorial model.
And so, versus the pure democracy, and everybody that knows anything about a pure democracy knows that a pure democracy doesn't work. They fail consistently. We have a republic in this country for a reason. Everybody keeps saying democracy, democracy. We don't have a democracy. We have a democratic republic, and we have a republic for a reason. One of those reasons is because it prevents the majority from abusing the minority. We have a majority in Cleveland who abuses all of it, not just Jagger County, but all the smaller counties that are around the area. But I want to make a point, because the press is here, and I know that where things go with the press oftentimes relative to these kinds of conversations. I probably ride as many bike miles in here as anybody in this room. I ride for exercise, and I ride to go get groceries at the grocery store. I ride on the best bicycle trails in all of the county, and that's called Route three twenty-two, three oh six, Cave's Road. And so, recreational bicycle, I have nothing against recreational bicycle trails. I want to be very clear about that. But I think that bicycle trails ought to be paid by, for, by recreational dollars, by bicycle, people that ride bicycles ought to contribute to bicycle trails. You shouldn't be using road dollars to contribute to bicycle trails. That's my gripe with the whole Nuwaka and bicycle trails and all that kind of stuff, because it diverts valuable dollars from potholes and fixing bridges and our critical infrastructure into a recreational activity. And so that's the reason I complain about that, and I'm not the only one, by the way, there's a lot of people speak out about it. Plus, in northeastern Ohio, a bicycle trail, I mean, I point outside to the bicycle trail I've got outside just to make the point, there aren't a lot of bikes on the bicycle trails today, all over northeastern Ohio. Go down to the Canal Boulevard, whatever, and look at the traffic, overall traffic count. And so, I'm just making a point about Nuwaka and the MPO mechanism that's set up through federal law.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
You know, MPO Metropolitan Planning Organization, required by law currently. And you look at other ways of distributing transportation dollars, Ohio Public Works Commission, that's where you have county engineers, township trustees, people at the ground level providing infrastructure repair or improvement. And somehow, they're able to take these dollars through that process and very efficiently and fairly allocate transportation dollars. The MPO process has morphed into this multimillion-dollar boondoggle, where you have these bureaucracies of very highly-paid people in very nice offices, sitting down there, and that's all money that isn't going into fixed roads and bridges, it's going into a nice administrative staff to essentially supposedly allocate transportation dollars, but they seem to have morphed into social engineering. So it's kind of with the congressional majority today, are the Republicans, are they gonna do something about that? Are we gonna get back to really fixing roads? Are we gonna continue to support an inefficient bureaucracy?
And you make, Dave makes a good point, and I think this is a good conversation for the handful of people that will see it. Maybe the word'll leak out in some way, shape, or form.
Or viral.
But OPWC, which is the Ohio grand, or Ohio taxes that are taken in, I just came back from one of the meetings, I mean, the board, the commissioners are on that board. One of the most effective, efficient mechanisms for allocating dollars across the region of any that we've got. It's simple, it's straightforward, the engineers drive it. What do I know about roads? What do I know about scheduling, maintenance on roads, and so on and so forth? The engineers really are, take care of all that, but yet they, because we have to approve those dollars, we're budgetary, we're, we get to sit in the room, listen to what's going on. If we have a gripe, we can gripe about it, whatever, take, ask questions on it. But it happens very efficiently, very effectively, and there's, there's no politics. You see Democrats in the room, you see, you don't even know who they are, who's a Democrat, who's a Republican. You don't know who's Masturbula versus Portage versus Jagger County, because they're engineers who's looking out for the best interest, they all play nice together, we all sit at the table, it's done, that whole meeting is executed, we take care of the majority of the roads, actually, in the counties, and probably-
Zero cost, zero military cost.
In about an hour.
Yeah.
Okay? Why the MPOs can't operate, and they used to operate in that way, but they've been slowly, and again, we have the ability to reconfigure those in the state of Ohio. What we don't, because we allow the organizations themselves to kind of maneuver and to, to adjust their own mechanisms and how they work themselves, and we've lost control of that in Nuwaka.
I'll say something that I'll regret, because it's on film, but eighteen months ago, twenty-four months ago, some-
Time back.
Time, time back. The folks at Nuwaka tried to establish, or reconfigure, a board or a meeting group. It had, I believe at the time, and these are, these numbers aren't exact, but they're close, I think there was like thirty-five people on this board. It had to do with engineers, technical aspects of roads, bridges, things that a civil engineer would be involved with. And they proposed reconfiguring that panel or committee to, again, around eleven people. All those, of those eleven people had accreditation, they were degreed in some fashion for this, this task. I asked a couple of them that were in that eleven, and they said, well, part of the problem is, we can't get a meeting, because we can't get a quorum. Because there's twenty-four people that have nothing to do with the technical aspect of this job, that are on the committee. And they, they said, wait, you know, if, if we don't get a quorum, we don't have a meeting. So I, I'm speaking now, as I did at that board table down, what those forty-some people are on, it just makes sense to me that if you're gonna have a technical committee, it should be staffed with technical people from the five counties. I don't care who these people are, as long as they have accreditation to be on there. Opposition was raised by someone because there were no women or people of color on this committee. Now, it hadn't, it didn't have anything to do, you know, the exclusion or inclusion didn't have anything to do with gender, or race, or anything else. It was, the committee was to be comprised of people who had something to add to the who had something to add to the technical aspect of it. Yet the objection was more of a social inclusion objection. And at that point in time, that's one of the two or three things that I just said, I'm done. And I have a, an alternate from the engineer's office that goes down there, because I'm not an engineer. So if they're trying to pull something over, in my case, it's Shane Hajar, who's, and he's chief deputy engineer, I think. Whatever, he is an engineer.
He's a P E.
Yeah, he's an engineer. And when you start to talk to me about that stuff, I can say, well, it makes some sense. But really, I don't add much of an expertise to that, to, to that, you know, exercise. And I just, when, when all that and, and, you know, we're gonna borrow money to do important, you know, things that we're supposed to do, and pay more for the job through interest, and then take money that was earmarked for, I don't want to use the word fluff, but I can't think of a, non essentials. I don't know, I just throw up my hands.
Let me give you another example of, you know, just for the sake, and I sort of could have suggested you bring popcorn with you today.
Yeah, we could have had it.
I'm on a bit of a roll here. But let me give you one more example, and we're talking about safety lanes for our buggies and so forth. A year or so ago, I went out and met with Ben Garlick, and we started a conversation, which led to a study on the part of Ohio of the buggy lane situation, safety in Middlefield and Burton and those areas. Great study. It's sitting in a can in the back room. The problem is, O D O N oftentimes isn't good at the executing part. They're real good at the studying part, okay? And it said that six oh eight north of Middlefield was a good road to widen. It's not a city road. The city can't submit a project for that. It is a road that the state can submit requests for, or O D O N can put money into the pie for. Noaka could actually put that, we could make a request to Noaka, or somebody, the state could make a request to Noaka to actually take care of that road. There was a conversation that came up in the last Noaka meeting about a forty million dollar safety fund in the state of Ohio. That forty million dollar safety fund is earmarked for things like the Middlefield buggy lanes. I mentioned that. And they, Noaka's objective is to take that million dollar, forty million dollar pile of money, because they can't get into it. It's allocated for a specific purpose. They want to change the law so they can get into that money, and they can steer where that money goes. And I had suggested to them, wait a minute, timeout. We've got a safety issue in Middlefield. We could theoretically use that money to put in our, to widen the roads on six oh eight north of Middlefield, so the buggies don't, aren't at risk and so on and so forth. They don't like that idea, because they can't control that. This is an example of the thought process that goes to organizations, large organizations like this, not just Noaka, but larger organizations like this. I reached out to the state of Ohio, to our representative, or actually, yeah, state of Ohio, O D O N, to the guy who was responsible for the study and for working with Joe Cutell on our roads, on state roads. Because the county takes care of all the county roads, township's township roads. There's only a few roads, relatively speaking, that the state and the federal government take care of, and that's the state roads, three twenty-two and three oh six and so on and so forth. And I brought that up to them. Is there a way that we can use this forty million dollar pot of money? Which is available. It's sitting there, ready to use. We've got a project allocated to the stu, or not allocated, but brought up to the study that we could use for that. Where do you think that that's gone? Nowhere. And so, I got no feedback. Nobody's responded to me. I'm gonna push those buttons a little bit. This is part of the, I mean, we as county commissioners have really, we're toothless tiger, as was recently said. We have very little authority, other than the budget. This is, the only way we can get anything to happen is by standing up and speaking and calling that out and talking to people and that kind of stuff. If you want to change the federal law, the only way you can do that is to raise that up to our federal representatives and ask them to make something happen and to express frustration. And so, at the federal level, that we could change the N P Os and so forth. At the state level, if we're gonna raise gas taxes, I'd much prefer raising them locally at the state level, because I can see the state O P W C mechanism stuff work way better than any federal system that we've got out there. And, and actually, our townships and our cities do a much better job than, in the county, do a much better job than the state guys do. And so, you know, I bring this up today, and I apologize for grandstanding a little bit. I get accused and beat up because I grandstand periodically. But how else are you supposed to know? How's the news media supposed to know all the stuff that's happening behind the scenes and all the nuance that's happening out there? You hear infrastructure, 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 but you don't hear the nonsense and the waste that's going on with the current infrastructure. And if we could get rid of some of that nonsense and waste, the cost to us would probably change dramatically, the cost equation would change dramatically. So, that's the last word I'll say. And I apologize to you again for ranting a little bit this morning. I saw this thing from Noaka, and you can blame Blake for it, because he was the one who caught the, he caught the nuance in there, what Noaka was trying to do. And I said, oh my gosh, I didn't see that. I missed that. And so it got me going this morning, so.
Well, on that note, I will move to adjourn.
Yeah, I, you second.
Thank you for coming.